Well, maybe a ball first.
Yeah.
Maybe.
So there's, yeah, he's kind of.
Yeah.
And then both.
Yeah.
Looks like Go is speaking.
So Jan.
Well, I'm gonna default over to Jan. It's his baby.
Yeah. Well, I told you that. Sad as.
Oh.
Well, sad. Sad as.
Okay. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole. Monday, October 16th, 2017, 4:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda after I make one small pro forma announcement, which is that I want to recognize that we are on the traditional territory of the Houpeteset and the Sishtou First Nation. Council, we have an agenda in front. Motion to approve the agenda circulated would be in order.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor? Carrie.
Just a point, Mr. Mayor, is that we couldn't vote in a committee of the whole. I'm wondering how come we got even the head of the chair?
I'm just. City Clerk? It's a good point.
Yeah, it is.
But we do have, you know, a formal. It's okay. He just wanted to put me in my place, so it's all right.
No, it's a good question, because I'm just wondering if we need a quorum to be attending these meetings, so.
I believe we do need a quorum. Committee of the Whole is certainly new to us. They're not decision-making meetings. Council is here to receive information and discuss topics so that they can make better informed decisions at regular meetings of council. As far as an agenda, though, I think that's probably fairly common. I don't believe motions need to be seconded in Committee of the Whole, and that isn't our procedures by law. But I think it's acceptable to have an agenda.
It's acceptable to have the agenda and it's acceptable to approve the agenda. We just can't make any decisions that would have further implications.
I was just curious. I would take all rules of order where applied. I would take all rules of order. And I can argue and everything? Well, we will. I want some good subjects here that we can argue.
All right. Well, then, Council, in that case, we have an opportunity from our first delegation, and that is with Mr. Bill Collette, Executive Director, Chamber of Commerce. And he's here to address Council to participate or kick off a discussion regarding the Chamber of Commerce request to Council from February of this year for business license revenues to be placed in a separate account to undertake major projects. So, Mr. Collette.
I'm gonna deflect over to Jan LaVirtu, and he's gonna kind of lead the discussion here.
All right.
If that's okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, he kind of passed that off, because this was an idea that we had a few years ago about reserving these funds and stuff, so. Just a quick little thing in the PowerPoint. Who? What the hell am I doing here?
Not that one. Oh, sorry. There we go.
The other left and right button.
This meeting is being livestreamed, so the whole world is watching.
That's okay. It wouldn't be the first time I've made a fool of myself, so. Currently, the business license fees acquires over $100,000 a year, and, you know, I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but $100,000 is quite significant. Currently, those revenues are going into general revenues for the city. Our proposal is, is that when you look at that $132 that the typical average business pays per year, that money should be allocated into a separate fund, no different than the sewer and water, for example. So those funds would be directed into a separate fund that would use towards capital projects. Hopefully, some of those funds that we would be able to use to leverage against provincial or federal grants that may or may not be available. But it's generally, in our opinion, is that it should be for capital projects. So it's not for flowers. It's for doing something that will be impactful for the community as a whole, and more importantly, even the business community. Currently, we see it as more of a tax than, you know, so than the property. So we'd like to see that word "tax" kind of go away and be as a fee. The other thing, too, is that we truly believe that there are many businesses that do not currently apply or pay their business license fee. We're hoping that if we can show them, that the Council can show them, that their funds are actually being directed towards something that will help the business community, that they'd be more willing to pay. Currently, as you probably all are aware, the federal and provincial governments are really, you know, giving the small business guys a hard time, you know. They think we're all multimillionaires, and it's not even just the tax reforms. It's all these little things that we have to do, and we're getting kind of nickled and dimed to death. So I think this is a great opportunity for Council and the city to say, hey, listen, this fee that we're collecting, we're putting it and we're earmarking it towards something important. Obviously, we'd like to have some input. I know, for example, that the charrette for Lower Johnson was a great two-day event. The challenge, though, is, is where do we get the money? How do we start? What do we do? And there's a lot of things that can be done. $100,000, even if it was collected for two years and you're able to leverage that at 50 cent dollars, you know, you can have two $400,000, you can actually make an impact towards something.
So I think that's it. If you have any questions.
Just to double-check on a couple of things. I see Mr. Deacon sitting in the back. Approximately how many businesses are licensed in Port Alberni?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that.
Okay.
In 2016, the city brought in just over $130,000 in business license revenue, and that was across 904 business licenses. So an average of, my math says about $144 on average.
Okay. And do you also have the information as to how much money has gone into the facade improvement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't have that at hand. Mr. Deacon might have that at hand, or we can bring back a report later for Council.
We've had year two, and I believe we put in $50,000 per year, right? With $100,000 on top of it from the, from Community Futures. So a total of 150.
Each year.
Yeah. Okay. So there is a certain amount of, I mean, arguably, there's a certain amount of money goes back to encourage businesses?
Absolutely. And, you know, we appreciate that Council is very aware of that, and, you know, business improvements like the facade project are really important, and I think we need to continue to do things like that. But the other thinking is, is that we need to try and leverage those funds, if we can, right? You know, so, but the only way we can leverage those funds or keep those funds separate is to be able to say, we're not waiting for budget time to be able to say, we have $100,000 in reserve, something's come up that we can take advantage of. So that's typically the process that happens right now. We have to wait for budget time. But if those funds are reserved, now, when something does come up, you know, Council's discretion can use those funds towards whatever that is. You know, and just as some of the pictures that are showing here, like showing people how to get to the harbor key, right? And one of the ideas and projects that we had was having these salmon running all the way down, stamped, all the way up to the harbor key, to, again, little things to be able to encourage visitors to come and spend money.
So, just out of curiosity, do you have any estimate of the total number of businesses in our community that might not be paying their business licenses? Do you think we're hitting 50% of them, or?
Well, I think some of the challenges comes in is that we have a lot of businesses in the rural areas, right, that do their core business in the city but don't pay. So those are the types of people that we'd like to be able to encourage to get businesses licenses, to do businesses in the city.
So what number would that be?
Well, I mean, there's probably, I'll bet there's a couple hundred businesses that are not paying. And they could be a home-based business where they're cutting hair, right, in their basement of their home, or what have you. So, and I'm not picking on hairdressers, but you know what I mean? There's a whole bunch of these little types of businesses. There's a lot of handyman-type businesses and stuff that don't pay licenses currently.
A lot of body mechanics that's lots of the regional district.
And I think that the challenge is, is that if we can show them value, we can show why they should be paying, encourage them, encourage them to be part of the chamber, and all these types of things, that's what really makes the community strong as a whole, right? You need a good business base to build a strong community.
Yeah. Chris?
I like the idea. I think back to a couple of years ago when we were at UBCM, and they were talking about, I can't remember if it was Quinell or if it was Williams Lake, but they were talking about how they put together a system where the citizens knew exactly what projects were being funded by what money. And how it not only kind of helped to push things along, but it indicated to the citizens that, yeah, there's something that they're getting out of their tax dollars. And it helped, you know, kind of drive that psychological factor as well, and I think that would, I think that would be quite the same with this kind of a business license reserve, if you could call it that. You know, $100,000 isn't a huge amount of money, but it's enough to, like you said, you can look for grant opportunities to match and do all those little things that you can do.
You're absolutely right. And I mean, we've talked about having a "Welcome to Port Alberni" sign. We've talked about a bunch of things, but, you know, unfortunately, they get prioritized a little bit lower because something more important always will come along. So that is the importance to earmarking these funds into a reserve for these kind of special projects, you know.
And it would be interesting to see, you know, the hardest part is, what are those projects? What are the uses that you'd be allowed to put these towards? And I guess that's something that City Council would have to kind of figure out and consult with the business community to see what makes sense, but it would be good to have something that was, you know, pretty direct, so that we could say, well, yeah, that, but not.
Yeah, and that's why we were using the word "capital projects," not annual flowers and hanging baskets, you know. I think that's part of the whole operational of the city and Parks and Rec and that type of thing. But I think this needs to be more concentrated, and I agree that if you can come up with a list of, you know, these are the things that those funds should be used for, I think that's a great idea.
Counselor Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah? For those who are not a member of the chamber, what do the chamber dues and what are the benefits of being a member of the Chamber of Commerce?
So, the greatest thing is, we're advocates, right? We're standing here today, right? This is what the chamber does, is stand in front of Council to be able to say, listen, you know, here's, we're paying business license fee, where's it going? What's it doing? Is there a better way? And that's really what we do. Mr. Collette was in Fredericton, you know, on behalf of PATH, you know, supporting PATH and getting, you know, national recognition. So we do everything from trying to support local businesses locally, provincially, you know, federally, to be able to better the business community as a whole.
$185 is the most common one. 200.
I missed the comment that you made. Sorry?
$185 is the primary rate. We have about four rates, but 95% of the business is paid 185 plus taxes.
I thought that's what you were suggesting the business license fee should be.
No, no.
Okay. Counselor. Counselor Sauvay.
Speaking of the chambers of commerce membership, what was their feedback? Have you spoken to them about it? And I'd like to hear what all the businesses that are licensed, how they feel about how the money is being handled.
How the business license or having to pay it? There's two different, there's two different things here.
How, well, having to pay it, nobody wants to pay anything, but how it's handled.
Well, that's the biggest complaint that we hear, is that nobody knows what that money is used for. And it's no different right now when we're looking at provincial fees and federal fees that small businesses are paying, and you're gonna notice that there's even more and more pushback from the business community provincially and federally, is because they really want to know the money that they're putting and giving in fees and dues and stuff, where's it going? And it needs to be, we need to have some transparency to know exactly what happens with those funds.
Did they mention any comments about how they felt about regional district businesses actually doing 95% of their work within the city boundaries? Any frustrations coming from?
There is, you know, but again, you know, businesses doesn't want to get up in front and, you know, and say, hey, you know, those guys aren't paying, so don't support them. And that's not what the chamber's about. The chamber's about supporting all business community in the entire valley. It's not just the city of Port Alberni. But we also recognize that, you know, there should be that $130,000, as the CAO commented on, maybe that's $150,000 what it should be. And that would go really a long ways into making business improvements, because remember, they're benefiting from being part of this community and doing business within the city, even though they don't pay a business license fee or even property taxes towards that.
So if we set up a regime where if you didn't have a business license, you couldn't operate in the city?
We think that already exists.
We'd have, we'd have to enforce that somehow, right?
Yes, yes.
So the cost of enforcement would probably equal the $130,000.
So that's why we've never entered or even talked about enforcement. We've talked about encouragement. You know, I think the biggest thing we can do is, is to say, listen, we want to encourage all business to pay because this is what happens to the money. Currently, they don't know. And you know what? When people hear about facade projects and stuff like that, $50,000 that helps the business community, it's kind of whitewashed. It's not really known where that money came from, and a lot of the people in the community think that they're paying for that, right? The residents think they're paying for it. And in actuality, that, a lot of that came from the business license fee.
Probably as possible as a suggestion would have come from there. But I bet you, you've got someone, part of your group, that has a few things to say, too, since this is Committee of the Whole.
Just a little history. I think Jack might remember, but once upon a time, the fee for service chamber got back in, and I think, oh, by the way, we only pay $35 each, but we don't have a business, but we still pay membership in the chamber just so we can keep bothering you guys. But, and I'm looking for my 50-year.
I don't think Bob needed $35 to do that.
We used to, the business license fee used to go to the Chamber of Commerce directly as their fee for service. And when it exceeded 90-some-odd thousand dollars at one point, it became a fixed amount for your budget. And I think that was 90, I forget what the number was. And then that's where things changed. We're glad that happened, because many businesses thought, well, we already pay our license fee and it goes to the chamber. So chamber membership was hard to sell. We already pay through the city. That's why this idea is so much better. And also, even in fundraisers or anything else, if we ask for money for Pacific Salmon Foundation, but we ask for a particular project, the wallet's open much easier. If it's, if money's dedicated to a project or a project, or we prioritize some projects and then did it one at a time, as the charrette and others have noted, people are, it's more easy to give their money to a project they can see the result of than they are general revenues. Even though the project still gets done through the flow.
The recommendations in the charrette are, have gone into the strategic priorities fund application, so if we get that, that's, you know, $6 million that we would put into, obviously, implementing fully the recommendations from that. So that would equal quite a few years of business license fees, so we could use those fees for other things. I guess that's what you're suggesting.
But there's more than the Lower Johnson charrette. I mean, we have five business communities throughout the city, you know, and there's been a lot of ideas, you know, like you're entering the District of Sopo, you're entering the Waterfront District, you're entering, all these types of things are very important for visitors, right? We all know Northport, Southport, you know, but as a visitor, you don't understand. And it makes a really easy job for the people that work at the chamber office and the visitor center to be able to say, hey, we've kind of got these cool areas. We've got the River District, the Lower Johnson, we've got the Waterfront District, we've got the Uptown District, these types of things. So those are the funds that we can use. It's not just for one particular area. The other thing, too, is that we've made requests in the past for putting power in the meridian between the two big shopping centers, so we could light that up. You know, it's a $5,000 ask, but there isn't $5,000 for the city to do it. This is one of those small, little things that we can get $5,000 to put power. We already have donations for the lights and everything. It's one of those small, impactful things that we can do for minimal cost.
Maybe we could put water there, too, so that the plants don't die in the summertime.
That'd be a great idea.
Counselor Minions.
Thank you. I think I just, in general, want to really echo Jan's comments. On the topic of businesses not being licensed, I think a good chunk of the businesses that are not licensed are not licensed because they don't have a general understanding of our system and the requirements. And I think at the city, we often, like, just expect that everybody knows what's required of them, but, you know, we forget that regular people don't always know how to get a business license or a building permit or when it's required. And if you're not in this world, then, you know, we have to really, we have to baby people sometimes. I didn't know for a long time that I needed a business license for a home business, and so I just didn't have one for many years. And now I have one, and sometimes I think, why do I have one? You know, what am I getting for having one? What's the point of having one? There's no enforcement, so even though it isn't, it feels like a choice to have one or not have one. It shouldn't feel optional, but I think if we don't enforce it, and we probably are not going to enforce it, then we have to find ways to encourage people, because if we're not enforcing it, then it really is an optional program. I think the only way to encourage people to get business licenses is to show value and where their money's going. And I can't think of really any better way to do that than by showing exciting projects that the money's going towards. So I really like this concept. I don't know about the logistics of, you know, if we would just have a fund and we could draw from it for different projects at budget time, or if it would be more of a committee where projects were suggested. But I think this is a good step, and with some advertising of why you need a business license, what it goes to, how to get one, I think it could be a great way to increase funds and do some exciting programs in the community.
And this is absolutely what the chamber can do to help support this as well. You know, that's why we're kind of excited, you know, if Council decides to move forward with this. We have this great online presence and stuff like that, where we're in contact with the business community. So, you know, for us, it's all about just educating and doing our dinner meetings and doing all those things that we do currently to be able to educate the business community on why they should do these things.
Counselor Paulson and Counselor Sauvay.
I like the concept, and we've discussed this before, and the thing is, I think we need to be very careful. We need to be moving forward and define what major projects are, like what a major project is and what the categories are. I would kind of like some feedback from Kathy Rothwall, if I could, what the ramifications in overall budgeting and so on would be if we took this money and put it into other areas, or possibly CAO, if you wouldn't mind, but I like the concept. I think it's great, and I think you're right, Chris. So when we talked to the people from Quinell, they started those projects, and they're a community that's really suffering. But they had site-specific projects, and people bought into that. They said, okay, I know exactly, $10 is going to replace that sewer or whatever, so. But good thoughts, guys, and thanks for coming forward.
Yeah, CAO.
Mr. Mayor, to that point, so the city brings in approximately $130,000 a year from business licenses, business license revenues, and that money goes to general revenue, which is generally considered to be a black hole, right? And nobody feels good about their taxes going to general revenue, but general revenue keeps the lights on, keeps the streets paved, keeps the city operating. So, you know, we'd all like, I'd like my residents, my house taxes to be, you know, to pave my street, right? We'd all like to see some linkage to where our taxes go, and the city hasn't done. We could never do a good enough job on that. So we need to strive to do a better job to show connectivity for value for money. So if, to the question, if we were to sequester that revenue, $130,000 a year into a reserve fund, Council can choose to do that, that would mean that we would be short, if you like, $130,000 from general revenue, so we would have, Council would have choices. We could curtail our operations by that amount of money. The equivalent service of that amount of money or services. We could increase other revenues, taxes likely, to make up that shortfall. Or we could decrease the amount of general revenue that we commit to capital projects already, because we commit a significant amount of general revenue every year to capital projects. So in essence, we could, we could, if you took that path, we could reserve this, these funds for some capital projects, and we could stop doing some other capital projects. So we'd just be transferring money from one account, if you like, to the other. If Council wanted to consider some kind of committee input onto how those funds were spent, then that might, that's worthy of a conversation. So, you know, who would be on that committee? What kind of criteria would you set for that committee? In essence, you'd be giving away Council authority on choosing what priorities are to some other body, just as you would anytime you strike any committee that gets the opportunity to influence expenditures. I don't know if that answers that question?
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's.
And I don't mean to say it's not a good idea. It's, we'd like to have ways to show connectivity for where the money's spent, and maybe that helps us raise those revenues.
We're still doing major project capital projects. It just defines what those would be.
Sure, yeah.
Whether it's a dicentry.
Yeah. And if I may comment, and you're absolutely right, Counselor Paulson, it is important because you get to see, you know, it becomes an expenditure out of that one account. So Kathy can pull up that account and say, we've collected 130, 30 went to this project, 10 went to this project, 50 went to this project. So it's very clear to what happens. Currently, under the current system, we see the business license fee or tax, right, go into general revenue. So we're saying it's a business community, we just want to see that funds, 100% of it, allocated towards major projects, capital projects.
And what they are.
And what they are. Absolutely.
Yeah. Counselor Sauvay.
Yeah, I got two questions. City manager kind of burst my bubble there, because it's allocate one money, we gotta take away from somewhere else, and it totally makes sense, which concerns me. And it's not like the city hasn't done nothing to improve any other capital projects for any type of businesses, and, you know, just the Johnson corridor with the flowers and so forth. And, you know, it explains that, so I got a concern about that. Have you seen any other communities, as in compare with other chambers of commerce, as in to what their community do?
Well, there's such a mishmash of what each community does, and we're kind of unique in, because of the rural district, that it's not clearly defined. that it's not clearly defined what businesses are operating within the community. So we're unique in that way. We're not like a colona where the bulk of the business is done inside that community. They're all taxpayers within that community, right? So they're paying a business property tax, and they're also paying a business license fee. So we're a little bit unique, because we do have businesses that aren't. And as the CIO had commented was, this may be a good way to encourage the increase of revenues if the business community could really see what those funds were being allocated towards. Now remember, what you're talking about operating the city, that's through property tax. This is not a property tax. This is a tax, a license fee, just for doing business in the community. So it's completely separate. I see it as a separate thing altogether.
Yeah, it just, I hate the fact that, you know, and after listening to Counselor Minions, to the fact that businesses out there say, why bother? Why bother getting a license if it's not being enforced? As far as I know, it is being enforced, and I expect it to be enforced. So, you know, should we put some money into enforcement? And recapturing a lot of funds that we're missing out on, because I'm seeing a lot of businesses that are taking advantage of moving their business from, an example, from the Uptown and going into the regional district area, just so they could, you know, save some money. And it just, I believe it sends the wrong message. But again, if we're going to have bylaws and we're going to enforcement, especially on the business aspect of having a license, I do expect those bylaws to be respected. But again, I'm really curious to see what other communities done, if it has to do with wordsmithing in the, in our accounts to show that, you know, because I'm sure if we dissect the, or budget for the last year, we could indicate specifically where certain projects, I see it during the audit committee, that certain money is going to certain projects and having to do. So I could actually justify going to the receiver general account that some money are going towards improving businesses, facade improvement and so forth. But I don't know which way to go on this. But I seriously like to see what other communities do.
So if I may comment, a couple of things. You mentioned the flower planting. The flower planting is for community improvement. It is not just for the business district. Yes, they're in highlighted business areas, but we have them on the corner of Redford and Stamp and all these different other locations that flower planters and beds are done. So it's not, you know, just for the business community. So there's certain things like that, that, yeah, they may be in the business community, but they're not specifically for business. The other thing too, that's, that's unique about this is that, that $130,000, it's not like council is ever going to go back and say, you know, we got to take some more money from general revenue, because the funds are there. We know what the fund is. And the fund is only as much as we collect. So as we as the chamber promote this, and we say to business communities, listen, you need to pay your business license fee, right? And we get that up to $150,000. It's not like we're going to Tim and saying, you know, Mr. CIO, we need another $50,000. We have to stay within that budget, but it's only what we collect. So if we only collect $100,000, then it's $100,000. If we collect $150,000, it's $150,000.
Okay. Counselor McClellan and then Counselor Minions.
Yeah, I, I guess the concept is good. My only question is, do you, you know, to me, I can see it working if we have some form of advisory committee or whatever, if it doesn't take a whole lot of time talking and not doing anything, but still coming up with ideas. And, and the city council, I guess we, we would just have to say, this money's there, and those type of projects are the ones that's going to come out of that, and that's up to this group of business people to prioritize. So, yeah, I can see that working that way, but whether it would be anything new or just be some of the other stuff we did, I guess it'd be up to how we worked it out, you know, because we've had the comment, we've already got facade, and that's about the same amount of money. Is it working? I think it's sort of working, and so I think that's good. So anyway, that's, that's my comment, and I wouldn't mind, Mr. Mayor, if there's any other, as this is a committee as a whole, any other business people in the audience or anything that want to say something, that'd be good.
One quick comment from Counselor Minions before we open it up a bit.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Sovey that we might need more enforcement, but we voted down enforcement in our last budget. Maybe we can discuss that again this budget. I think another part of this conversation is the differences in business licensing between us and the regional district. I think it's really important that as an end goal, we have mirrored business license guidelines in the city and the regional district. It is a huge frustration, I think, for a lot of city businesses that they have to hold a business license in town, and they can move, you know, maybe 10 blocks away and not have to have a business license at all. I'm sure there are differences in how we would operate, but I think that something we should be bringing to the regional district is a request that they consider business license bylaws as well, so that we're not the only ones in the valley having to ask our businesses to do this. And I think that it could be an opportunity for us as a city to offer to facilitate business licensing in the regional district at the city. I don't know that our staff has the capacity to add that, but, I mean, maybe something we could work towards long-term is all of the business license fees in the valley being collected at the city and going into projects for the whole valley, whether that's projects within the city of Port Alberni or outside of the city of Port Alberni. I think if we made this change and earmarked them for something, we would have a lot better chance of getting the regional district to buy into a program where we're collecting business license fees for them. But I think that's another part of this conversation that we shouldn't ignore, is that the regional district doesn't have business licensing requirements, and I think it would be helpful to the whole valley if they did.
I'm not actually sure if any regional district has business license requirements, do they?
No, and I think we talked about that last year, but there's nothing to say that they can't, is what we found out.
Okay.
So, I mean, if they had just the requirements and we facilitated the actual licensing process, and then the funds went into specific projects that would work for the whole valley, I think that would be a step forward. I don't understand why there's no requirements in the regional district. If you have a business, you should be licensed.
Counselor Ellman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a really good discussion. I, I don't want to muddy the water, but I'm going to muddy the water a little bit. Because we're, we're talking about capital improvements that, that could be funded by this kind of thing, and it's a small pot of money. Previous councils, I believe, have addressed a notion of having a hotel tax. A 2% hotel tax, and I knew that was going to get a reaction. Muddying the waters. But, I mean, the, the fact is, you know, our community is one of very few that doesn't have that in the community. And if we're looking at doing serious capital projects, that would attract business and, and attract more people into our community, wayfinding this kind of stuff, tourism-related businesses. I think that's something that we should probably consider at some point as well.
So I'll, I'll just briefly touch on it, because it is a sensitive subject. The, you're absolutely right. Now typically, hotel tax funds don't go towards capital projects. They go to marketing. So they're marketing your community outside, so, you know, either into the United States or into, you know, the rest of Canada and stuff like that. So the Chamber of Commerce is definitely in support of that. We are trying to work with, you know, all the groups and trying to see if we can come to a way to be able to encourage that. So it is something that is on the table, so it's not that we haven't forgotten about it, but it is something that we will have to work through.
It's possible we actually have some notoriety on that one. We may be the only community in B.C. that's actually withdrawn from the hotel.
Well, he was on the voluntary basis before.
See, one second. Just the CEO, out of curiosity, $130,000, what would that represent in percentage terms of a property tax? Would it be fair to say that's half a percent?
Kathy's, Ms. Rothwell showed me a one, so I believe that's approximately 1%.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's, just a few minutes left on this topic, and let's just see if we've got some comments. So.
I, I got told on, yeah. I didn't have a business license.
Oh, if you've got a, just because we're live streaming this, if you can come up.
Are you recording it?
Yeah. Not, not only are we recording it, we have very sensitive microphones. It picked up everything you say on the way up here.
I was wondering about that. Anyways, Jim Del Rio, I got a business in town here. I got told on, like, by another landscaper. He phoned and complained. And I got a phone call from the bylaw guy, and he said, what are you doing? And I said, mowing lawns. And he says, oh, for money? I says, yeah, just like any 12 or 13-year-old kid would be doing. You know, I was just playing along. I knew I needed one. But since then, I have investigated it, and every town that I've ever been in, I've had businesses in all of them. You're not allowed to do business in any town, even if you're in the regional, unless you have a business license. I got kicked out of a little town of Provost once, because I didn't have a business license for the town of Provost. So every time that I go in out of town, I did a lot of antique shows in that back then, and I put on antique shows. I had to get a business license for that town.
So did Provost have means of enforcing that then?
Yeah, they wouldn't, just wouldn't let me go. They'd just come and shut me down. That's, it's simple. I think I was up here about three years ago complaining to every logging truck that dumps logs in this town should have a business license. Anybody that comes from Nanaimo, or, and we get a lot of people from across the island that come here, and there is business licenses available now to cover all cities.
Right.
They should have one of those. But you have to enforce it. And I know Tim, I mean, he's, but I mean, we also are the only town of our size that only has one bylaw guy. Parksville has three or four, plus a secretary. You know, we have one guy downstairs that's trying to do it all. So like, and, and when, you guys are saying, what, $130,000? I figured there's probably $300,000 in business licenses that could be collected for in this town. Also in Wainwright, Alberta, like I'm, that's where I learned all this stuff, if you have a home business, it's $500 a year. If you have a business business, like in a storefront, it was like 140. But if you wanted to work out of your home, it was $500. Because if you work out of your home, you can write off your little office, you can write off your heating bill, you can write off your gas, you can write off everything in your own house. So I think it's a great idea what you guys came up with. Like, you know, it should be a marketing thing for businesses.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's what it should be for. And unfortunately, I know you guys are tight for money, but it should be in a separate account. Like just an account for that. All that money goes in there. But when that's, money's gone, that's it for that year. And if they can save some and carry it over to the next year, great. But you won't be able to probably do it through council. You're probably going to have to have a committee to, and they should have one council member on there that's been in business before. You know, you know, because it, it does make a difference. Like, I see what these guys are doing out at the mill. And last year, I was in here complaining about the mill. It should be, I'm, I'm impressed. It's turned me around, and if they can turn me around. Because I'm pretty stubborn, you know, and that, but I talked to the young girl out there that's running the mill now and, and her assistant and that. I was impressed with what's going on out there. I can see two, three, maybe four years down the road, taxpayers won't have to put anything into that. It might even make a little bit of money. It's going to take a while, but at least it's in the right direction.
Mm-hmm.
So if you guys are losing a hell of a pile of money, even if it's going into general revenue, I bet you can double that.
You're saying we might be able to pay for that extra enforcement?
That's right. Like, you know, but you have to start. That's the thing, you know, it's always nice to talk, but it's to take that first step and take a chance. And from what I've seen, this council has taken a chance on a lot of things. Some have worked out, some haven't. You know, that's the way life is. I mean, you know, but if you don't try, you'll never know if it can work.
Right.
That's just what I wanted to say. But I got told on, and I came down and bought a business license.
And you're the only person I've ever heard of who's been tossed out of Provost.
Well, no, the KKK was tossed out too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's, that's what they're noted for there.
I don't know it as well as you, obviously. Okay, Counselor Paulson.
Maybe I can direct this question to Mr. Smith. Sorry. Do we have any regulation with regards to if you're building a house and you have a contractor, if the contractor has to have a valid business license within the city? Yeah, Mr. Del Rio's correct. If you are doing business in the city, even if you're out of town business, you are required to have a business license. So for instance, if you're getting a building permit and there's a contractor from outside the community, we'd ensure you would have either a City of Port Alberni business license or an intercommunity business license for Central Vancouver Island that, that exists. And that intercommunity business license is something that a lot of contractors do use, because they are often working in more than, than one community.
So in the building permit process, do they actually have to show their business license?
Well, we can, we can check.
Yeah, okay.
The intercommunity business license, is it more expensive than just a regular city license, business license?
I think it's an additional $150.
And where does that $150 go?
It goes to where the, so it goes to the city where that intercommunity business license was taken out.
So if they're all from Parksville, Parksville's getting the advantage of somebody working in Port Alberni?
I don't think, it seems to have been evened out pretty well from the reporting. But yeah, that's, that's the case. Because when it was looked at, the, the idea of trying to administer, you know, okay, if they, this many come from here, and then we try and do some revenue sharing at the end of the year, that was deemed to be, you know, the administration to try and figure that out would probably cost, it would cost a substantial amount of money. So when that intercommunity business license was established, it was determined that each municipality gets to keep that, which is taken out in their.
So then would it be a legitimate thing if you're, if you phone up a business that isn't based in Port Alberni and ask if, if they're, if they'd be willing to do some work on, on your, your house as a homeowner, would it be a reasonable thing to suggest to people that they should be asking to see the business license?
That would be up to, to the individuals, but I would certainly encourage people to, to do that, just like if you're hiring a contractor, to be sure that they have proper insurance and those kinds of things too. Those are good questions, good questions for any person to be asking about that sort of stuff.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else, counsel? Any other comments? All right. So Jan, this is your opportunity to wrap up if you have anything else you want to say. Because we have, we're going to, we're next going to talk about business license bylaws.
So in conclusion, we strongly, the business community, support this. We believe that this is the next direction in which council should be taking. I think transparency is probably the most important thing of this, is taking those funds that the business community puts forward in their annual fee is to show it being allocated towards business improvements and projects. It helps two things. It helps the community as a whole, and it will also in turn help the business community. It's all about making our community strong and viable. That's what this is really all about. So thank you for your time, and hopefully you will take this and adopt it.
Well, thank you. We've certainly, we've had a few proposals from a number of businesses in the city who are concerned about competition just on the perimeter of the city, from businesses on the perimeter of the city, that they don't see as operating in a fair manner. So it's good to have this, this discussion.
And really, for us, at the end of the day, it will be trying to encourage the business community as a whole, whether your, your physical location is in Port Alberni or in the regional district to acquire a business license. And the easiest way to do that is to show where the funds have been distributed to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I have one question for the city clerk. Where to next with this? If we, if council decides that this is a, a topic that we wish to pursue, where would you suggest we go?
Mr. Mayor, any direction from council would have to be given at a, a regular meeting of council. So whether you're looking for a staff report or we just bring something forward to a regular meeting as a result of the minutes of this meeting perhaps, and council can provide some additional direction.
And which could happen at budget time or some other time? Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else? Counselor Washington? Okay, then, counsel, that brings us to the next item, and the last item is staff reports and. and it's a draft business license bylaw. And I'm not sure whether it's Mr. Deacon or Mr. Smith that are going to, that's going to be talking about it. Mr. Deacon, is it you?
Mr. Mayor and councillors, my comments will be brief. Some, after some complaints about our business license process, the management team began looking into it, and we realized that the problem was in part that business licensing was an orphan child. So even though there were five different departments touching on it, nobody, the buck did not stop anywhere except with the finance department at the end of the day, if they were collecting the fee. So we took on the task of making a dramatic improvement in the whole process of business licenses. And we really set out to achieve a few things. One was, we wanted to make the process much simpler, easier, and faster for entrepreneurs in the community. And two was that we wanted those entrepreneurs that were coming to take out a business license in the community to have to deal with one person as much as possible. We wanted an advocate within the city's ranks who would work with them if they had questions, challenges, if their application was getting hung up for whatever reason. Instead of having to go either to the fire marshal or the building inspector or the bylaw officer to figure out what was going on, they could come to one person. So the Economic Development Department has taken that function on, has become the champion for the business license. But we are doing it with the support of every department in the city. And we all recognize that there were, were some challenges here. Licenses have been outstanding, in some cases for months. And it's simply the getting dropped through the process. So we've really worked at doing it. In the course of doing it, we realized that the bylaw was quite outdated. It referred, it placed responsibility on the bylaw officer and business license inspector, I mean, from days and days gone by. So the, I'll ask the clerk to talk about the new bylaw, but it has been drafted by her with input from the finance department, the development services department, economic development, and, and the fire department. So that's where we're at. We're, we've, I think we've done a, a good job in the few months that we've been tackling this, of cleaning up a whole backlog of business licenses. We've become much faster at approving certain types of licenses. So we've cut down on the bureaucracy, if you will, made it easier and faster. And this is part of the cleanup. There is still some cleaning up to do. Right now, we're working with the finance department's permission. We're working, we're doing a workaround in the Tempest system. So in order to speed things up. We will be addressing that, but in the interim, the bylaw does have to be changed and approved.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, probably the, one of the things we did with the bylaw, which, as, as Pat mentioned, it was a fairly old bylaw. So it's just modernized it to reflect current practices, but we detached the application form. The previous bylaw had the actual business license application attached to it. So if we ever needed to change the application form, we'd have to change the bylaw. So this way, we can streamline as necessary the actual application form as we need to, and the bylaw will remain as it is. The primary reason for bringing it forward today, we'd like to bring it forward to the, the next regular meeting of council for consideration of, of introduction and three readings, but thought that this might be an opportunity for council to consider any potential changes to business license fees, if there was any appetite for that, or, you know, we could have that discussion now and then bring forward the bylaw that council might require to the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilor McClellan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I think it's basically a very good bylaw. It's a couple of points, though, that, a couple of questions, and, and under the definitions of business. I, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have something in there for nonprofit? Some kind of license necessary, because not the, maybe it was a free one, you know? But they'd have to have a certificate on their wall. And the reason I'm saying this is we got side blind, sideswiped there, blindsided everyone, I worded, when the so-called medical marijuana people came around. And they were given by this province a nonprofit status. Well, if I could have a nonprofit business like that, I, I wouldn't be worrying too much about my retirement. That's a pretty good retirement plan for nonprofit. So, you know, we caught a hold of it, and I, I think this council did the right thing. It was something that wasn't pleasant, but we were the first ones in B.C. that actually got control of it, even though Vancouver's making credit for that. But, so that's one thing I was looking at. The other one in 4.3. It is an offense under this bylaw to provide incorrect or misleading information. Is that covered in the fines and the penalties section? I, I didn't actually notice that particular thing, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't see that either, but perhaps city clerk has noticed it.
And, and I guess getting the new application to people, they've got to be wanting to do that. But the only other comment I'd, I'd like to make, and I, I know we can debate it forever, but I'd like to see the fee for, where did it go here? For medical marijuana, at least as high as the pawnbrokers and financial institutes. I'd rather see a $2,000 bills, like it is in the other towns. But that's something we can talk about, and those are my suggestions.
Uh, Councilor Sylvie?
That's very vague. Now, my concern about the nonprofit issue is I wish there was other examples than the dispensaries, because I would like to see any dispensary prove to me that it's going towards a nonprofit organization or...
That's what I said.
And so forth. But I, I think they should be held accountable. But just touching on that issue, I, I got serious concerns as into, because of new provincial or federal laws coming up in next September, to the fact is, I don't want us to think that our licensing for any type of business, but I'm using that as one as an example, is giving them a green card to pursue any other thing if it's contrary to regulations, federal or provincial. My question to the city manager would be, if that was the case, that the provincial or federal laws, obviously is going to supersede as into what our bylaws are, can we pull the license, or do we fall back on clause number 7.6, where they have to obey and withdraw their license?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask the Director of Development Services to respond to that question.
Did you understand a question you wanted to repeat?
Just a bit of clarification. So are, are we specifically talking about medical marijuana?
Let's talk about the dispensaries. I, I use, I, well, medical marijuana, I use that term very vague. But the dispensaries of marijuana. If the provincial or federal laws supersedes and new laws are coming in, and they're not in, in following those laws, can we pull the licenses by following the clause 7.6? Or are they thinking they're gonna have a free game for the rest of the year?
Well, when the, the province puts down the new rules about how medical marijuana is to be dispensed, sales, then that's gonna change the rules province-wide. So for instance, if, this is a total hypothetical, but if B.C. were to follow the same idea that Ontario is, where they're saying they're gonna distribute through their liquor, their liquor licensing operation, and they're gonna, they're gonna close down all the existing dispensaries. That'd be, that'd be one option. If the province says, "No, we're okay with private dispensaries with these following rules and regulations." Then we're gonna have to see how those rules and regulations match up with what we currently have, and we would have to make changes if they're different.
But my, my argument is, what gives us the authority to pull the license? Would be under clause 7.6, where they have to follow codes and regulations and orders of federal and provincial authorities?
To a certain, to a certain degree, but, I mean, the province is gonna supersede us. So if they're gonna, if they're gonna say these things are no longer valid, then, you know, we're, we're gonna be using the provincial authority, because that's gonna be a much stronger authority than any local bylaw we might, we might adopt.
Well, we, we didn't do that when we regulated it.
Okay, Councilor Minions, and then Councilor Washington.
Thank you. I, I think I agree with Councilor McClellan that fees should be higher for the dispensaries, specifically because I know our staff time to facilitate those, that licensing process has been substantially higher than, you know, for any other type of business. I know that we have to keep it reasonable within, you know, recovering our costs and not adding a new tax, but I do think that it would be reasonable for us to increase those. I don't know to what number, but I would kind of follow what other communities, well, maybe not, who knows? Anyways, I, I think it's reasonable for us to increase that, for sure. My question is, do we have, or I guess, is it normal to, like Mr. Del Rio said, is it normal to charge more for home-based businesses? Would it make sense for us to charge more for businesses who are outside of city limits? Or is that creating a tax? And at the same time, I'm kind of hesitant to want to increase fees for those businesses that we're trying to get to just register. But I wonder if that's a part of the, part of the discussion, at least. Should they have a standard fee like everybody else, or should it be different?
In each municipality, charges different fees, and I know the Economic Development Manager has done a bit of research about what some other municipalities charge. Council does have discretion to, to charge what the fees are, you know, within certain parameters. But clearly, they can go up to, you know, for instance, a dispensary could go up to a higher fee than it currently is. That, that certainly would be within council's discretion. One item that's been brought up about the nonprofit business ones. And we could put provisions in there potentially, and we, we thought about that. But when nonprofit societies run a business to generate sales, that go to, it's, we, we still treat it like a business, so that's why we require them to get a business license. Now, council could have a, a different fee for that if, if they, if they wished. But essentially, you know, there's, there's several nonprofit societies that essentially run a retail shop. And then, but they, they use that income, so they're, they're doing, the business is essentially operating like a normal business. It just goes to a nonprofit society. So we would need to be careful about exact, say, if you were to charge a lesser fee, we'd have to be really exact about what would qualify for that. But we could do that if that, you know, that would be something we could do a little more research on it and, and, and report back to council if, if you wanted to, to do that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering how, when was the last time we updated the, the fees? And are we comparing them to, say, Courtney or something like that? My first question.
Sorry, I can't answer the question as to when the last time the fees were updated. But I can tell you that we, we canvassed Parksville, Qualakin Beach, Nanaimo, Courtney, Campbell River, Duncan, Victoria, and Langford around the question of fees. And with respect to dispensaries, there's only one other municipality on the island that is charging for them, and that's Victoria. And they're charging $5,000 for a license. Courtney told us that if it becomes legal, they are proposing to charge somewhere between $1,500 and $2,000 for their license. In, none of those municipalities are home-based businesses being charged more than what the average license would be.
Got a question?
Under category six special events, fees $220 per day. Does that, would that include like the fall fairs and the salmon festivals and stuff? I mean, should, should West Coast Amusements be coming in and getting a business license because they're a carnival? Just, it's something I've never, I've never looked that close before, and I'm thinking, you know, maybe this, maybe as the salmon festival, maybe they have to get a license, too. I, I don't know, I'm just... But, I mean, West Coast Amusements, not wanting to pick on the fall fair, but...
Go ahead, Mr. Deacon.
So the only municipality that answered that directly was Duncan, and they charge $160 per day for a circus or carnival. But they haven't specified whether that's an annual event. I mean, it is a matter of concern, because, for clarification for everybody's sake. Every time we do an event, like the salmon festival, we get queries from the vendors that are going to be in there saying, "So what do I, do I have to pay? Am I covered by the event? Or am I covered by other provisions?" So it is something that needs some clarity.
Well, I know, I know the salmon festival, it is basically all service groups, so there is no for-profit vendors down there, so to speak. But when I, when I talk about West Coast, I know West Coast Amusements has been in the mall parking lot for, for, I mean, is that, is that a fundraiser for the mall, or is it, you know? Is it, should they be getting a license? It's just something that I've never thought of until just reading this on the weekend.
Yeah, good. They are very good questions.
Yep. Uh, Councilor Alamany?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I had much the same question around, you know, exhibitions. I was thinking about the home show, like you said, West Coast Amusements, that kind of stuff. So it would be good to have some more clarity about that. The other point I wanted to make was around the medical marijuana stuff. I, I agree. I, I think probably that the fees should be higher. You know, we, we have, we have a, a fee here for escort service for $2,200. So if we can charge that for $2,200, then I'm sure we can probably do that for medical marijuana. But as the Director of Development Services already said, you know, other jurisdictions have gone the way of, of regulation through liquor stores, at which point the... stores, at which point theoretically, our medical marijuana dispensaries would be obsolete, and they would fall under the liquor store. So I think it's probably smart to just wait until we know what the province is actually gonna do before we do anymore.
Okay. Anything else, council? Mr. Collette, and then Mr. Del Rio.
Just, this brings up, there's quite a can, an open can of worms here with this stuff. And last fall or last summer, I can't remember when it was, but a retailer from Nanaimo came and parked in one of the big malls. I'm not sure whether it was on the home hardware side or the other side. But they were selling footwear that's available here in Port Alberni at a reduced rate, no business license, no, no licensing fee whatsoever. And so our local retailers were pretty upset about that. So I, I think we do need to take a look at this sort of thing. It's, it's, it's quite a, you know, an interesting topic that needs some time spent on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Jim?
Yeah, please. Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, you could sit closer.
Yeah, that's true. Hey, that would take brains. The medical marijuana thing, you know, I, I kind of smile when I, when I see, because everybody's having the same problem. The only thing I would watch, that if you get the fees too high for the town, then they're gonna move to the other side of Georgia Street, you know, or they're gonna move out Cherry Creek, or they're gonna move out Beaver Creek into the region, just beyond the edge of town. We already have one out there on Highway Four. It's the last, what do they call it?
Last Grashop.
The last grass shop or something? It's just on Highway Four. They're just past the T-Shat Market.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and so, like, I just watched that. If you get it too high, they're just gonna, oh, well, we don't have to be in town, then we'll be-
That's the one that's known as the Stone House?
Yes, yeah.
There was one up Beaver Creek, but it was shut down quite quickly.
Yeah, but I think that was, that wasn't a nonprofit. And I say, I say that with tongue in cheek, because there's no such thing as a nonprofit pot store.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim. Okay. So council, unless there's anything urgent on this, Counselor McClellan, you-
Just, just a suggestion, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good idea to have, have a meeting like this, and we've done quite a bit of talking during this one about bylaw. Maybe the next one in a month or two could be on that. And I've, I've been looking some more stuff up to what I was talking about before, and maybe we can do that.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deacon, last word to you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, I just checked with Scott. We did get a complaint about the instance that Bill spoke of, but it came in on Friday night. And the bylaw officer doesn't work on the weekends, so they, that outfit did go ahead with their sales. But what Mr. Del Rio has pointed out, not explicitly, is that really, most of the individuals who come into the community to do business and don't have a license actually get reported by another business. So if I'm a roofing contractor and I see somebody from out of town roofing on somebody's house, I'm gonna phone and ask if they have a business license. That's just an example, but it's the same for every other trade. I mean, people going by are watching for this kind of stuff. So we regularly get calls, does so-and-so have a, a business license? And that's generally how it happens.
So you're saying you send Melissa out to enforce that?
No. No. I mean, you know, and the whole enforcement issue with, did become a topic in the last budget discussion with council, so-
Yeah, we recognize-
It'll come up again.
Yeah, the shortcomings.
Yeah.
Mr. Cole?
Mayor, can I just connect this back to our original-
Sure, come on up to the microphone.
Oh, no, sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to tie this back to our original conversation, because if we encourage people, individual people, hires a roofing contractor, ask them for the business license, ask them for WCB, for sure. But we could also use the promotion that if it's a local company and paying a local license fee, it's going to local project improvements if you attach it to that. And, and it would just encourage, you know, buy local, as the chamber has done for a long time.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, that brings us to the end of our committee at the whole time. And a motion to adjourn.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor?
You don't need a second.
Carry it. Oh, we don't need a second.